Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the August seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, Broadham County Board of Commissioners meeting. Call the meeting for order and ask everyone to override for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So attendance this afternoon, I see one person in Zoom land and that's Attorney Pat Conway. Nice to see you, Pat. In the Board of Commissioners room, we have all three commissioners. We have Julie White, Jason Henry, Chantel Jaconan, Chuck Nickerson, Robin Bernier, Drew Gates, and Leila Matilla. We'll go right into our openings and awards.
I'll make them.
Very first opening is for the rehab rehab and nursing center, Driscoll Tube painting.
Authorize the senior director of facilities planning, nineteen, with the closing term of recommendation.
Second.
Discussion. I'm excited to see these renovations happen and the transition would be good. This is all set up for more for expansion. So on the motion, Commissioner Tom Barello, Commissioner Godu, and I vote yes. Next, we have the consent agenda. First, a motion with respect to non-public meeting minutes.
We'll make a motion, take last week's motion for approval of the June third, two thousand and twenty-five non-public minutes from the table.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
It's July.
Yeah. Did you, I heard.
Oh, there's two motions.
Okay. That's correct. I am right. So just for clarification, the motion to pull the minutes off the table are for July third. On the clarified motion, Commissioner Godu, Commissioner Tom Barello, and I vote yes. Then we have a second motion with respect to the grievance hearing.
I'll make a motion to seal the July third, two thousand and twenty-five SCIU step two grievance hearing, non-public minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Tom Barello, Commissioner Godu, and I vote yes. Um. And the, we're gonna table the, well, I don't think we even need to handle with the those minutes. I think we just need to approve the.
The same date.
Uh huh. So there's two separate things. So we're not going to approve any minutes with respect to the grievance hearing meeting minutes. But and I don't think we even need to table. I think we can just move to approve the July third.
Yeah, that's what I agree.
So I'll make a motion to approve the July third, two thousand and twenty-five SCIU.
No, you're just approving the non-public meeting minutes. The second part.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of July third, non-public minutes.
Correct.
Exactly.
Any discussion on with respect to those meeting minutes? Thank you, Leila. Thorough, you're intentive and thorough as usual. On the motion, Commissioner Godu, Commissioner Tom Barello, and I vote yes. Do we even need to do, I don't think we need to do a motion to table the minutes, the July seventeenth?
Yeah, they could have just been omitted from the.
So we're gonna move right to the agency nursing staff report. And I just happened to run into, I mean, we'll offer up the table, but I just happened to run into Autumn at the, at lunch and it is exciting news here of Rockingham County, particularly in relation to new rates that we signed for the contract in recruiting and it seems like we have new employee interns coming fast and furiously. So it is really, really quite exciting. And I don't know, Chantel, Julie, do you want to, what, talk a little bit about where things are going, how our numbers are looking with travelers and the bright future?
Yeah, I know. I actually spoke to Autumn briefly because I haven't really seen Autumn at all the past. She's been super busy, but she does have, I think, five or six nursing employees starting next orientation and then seven in the pipeline for the one after that. So there's a lot of activity. I know that they had interviews for, I believe it's two L and As that are both in nursing school that we're looking to potentially have joining us as well. Uh, we have, because of retirement, our currently our three to eleven shift has been, our supervisors are both agency and they're wonderful. Um, we have filled one of them who accepted and one of them are, uh, the other, one of the other individuals has actually applied to potentially come on as house staff as well. We've had more people coming in to talk to us and then some of the last, I think, two orientations, we've actually had more house staff than agency and the last one was only house staff. So it was, I think the numbers, I'm trying to remember them from our coffee meeting yesterday, for the goal for hiring, that was the seventeen. By the end of June, we were at thirty-something for the target of hiring at that point. So a lot of really great moves in progress.
Yeah, I mean, last year our goal was seventeen L and As that we, that was the tipping point. And, you know, when we're looking at, we're gonna have eleven.
I believe you guys said the ball, or I remember last year it was the public watching. I like, that should have been twenty-seven.
The final.
You set the bar a little, I mean, I could win a race too, you know.
For the seventeen goal, as of the thirtieth, so for that fifth year for the goal. Uh, we had hired twenty-six L and As, which means full-time and part-time. We had six L and As in process and had hired five, um, L and A in front of teams.
There was a couple that met at the ice cream truck. They came, one of them came from Florida, just come right up the coast.
Wow.
And I've planned to give a little visit today because I want to give her a couple of weeks to just kind of settle the sheet. Wants to come here. So the travelers really think that we're the, the cattle out. She said, I've been from Florida all the way up the coast and I think this is where I would say.
We've had a handful more starting to reach out to us as well, surrounded in different pieces than during orientation. So we, we've had a lot of wonderful feedback. Even just an orientation, some of the staff talking about how beautiful the building is and you know, the different resources, et cetera. So really making some impressions and hopefully that'll continue accordingly.
Great. Well, thank you for that. Anything else? If anyone wants to share?
No.
Okay, let's move on to the accounts payable list approval.
Make a motion to approve the August seventh, two thousand and twenty-five accounts payable, little one million nine, one million nine hundred and two thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second.
Discussion. I know we're looking at some of the, you know, moving forward, some of our cost items, but you know, when we see how much I, we're still paying to contracted nursing as we can whittle that number down. Great. We'll see our AP run diminish as well. Happy about that. Um, we also have, there was a big portion of that bill for the, uh, coming out of contingent grants for our wastewater treatment for the turn of like a quarter million dollars to facilities.
Yeah, that was a big chunk. I think that was the biggest dollar list.
Yeah. All right. On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barello, and I vote yes. Next, we have commissioners' reports. Gentleman?
I'll start. I just came from the register deeds office and spoke with several members of their staff uh, before Kathy came out and they were as pleasant and informative as possible. I don't know anything about registering, you know, property and they were helpful and pleasant. It was a compliment to their, to the staff that, that really, really did.
They're on official personal business.
Yeah, right, exactly. And, and I registered the quitclaim deed now. So I'll get that, the original back, uh, next week and deliver it to Seabrook.
That's the Seabrook Cemetery.
Exactly. And I, I have a book and page number, you know, to refer to now. So that's, that's my total knowledge of registry of deeds.
I've gone in a number of times because I do, and I similarly have always had the like best experiences. It's incredible. They're, the staff there are so helpful, like always so kind and so helpful.
Yeah, they work.
It's really nice. And like they'll show people how to use the online database for research. They're very, very helpful.
And on the same or similar subject, we saw the building yesterday, uh, the registry of deeds area and that, that building is just absolutely beautiful. Uh, it's, we're gonna be, the county should be proud of the, the auditorium, the public space, the, the registry of deeds area, which is where most of the public will be coming in and out. Uh, it is, they've done a great job and it's a compliment to Jude and her staff and, and the Harvey construction.
Yeah, and Warren Street.
And Warren Street, yeah.
I think we talked too early about possibly ribbon cutting date.
I didn't talk about it.
We started to toss around some dates for the ribbon cutting.
October second is a Thursday.
See what it is. Nothing's ever shown.
Bill, is it Bill Conti?
Yes.
He said that he was available then because he's traveling to Italy a couple of weeks after that. And, um, so we're trying to round up to see if the right people and everybody likes that date. If, the thought, I think, is that we do that in the morning and then have our meeting at one o'clock as usual. I.
I have a problem to go to the.
I texted her yesterday and she did respond to me, but not on that specific item.
The only thing is that the second is Yom Kippur. So I don't know if that is Yom Kippur. Just, uh, it's a holiday for some, so we just might want to be, I mean, it's I'm available, but we should just check with everybody to make sure there's.
Maybe a date without it being a meeting is.
Yeah, preferable.
Yeah, because I mean, I think that initial part could belong in on, on, might not be there. We gotta leave you folk. I think it could be, maybe a different.
Could be the day before.
Yeah, why don't we try it October first? Is that?
I'll reach out to them.
We'll kind of pencil that in and see if it works for everyone.
I think a non-meeting day would be preferable.
Okay.
And I told him, I want you guys all to know that I'm gonna be in Italy for two weeks. So, you know, if, if, if it backfires and I can't be there, I want to build the ribbon cut. I'd like to be there, but.
When are you going to Italy?
September fourteenth to twenty eighth.
Oh, you'll be back. Oh, twenty eighth. So you'll be still, we will be expecting bottles of wine coming back on the.
Jude made the great point and that you have been working on this project since two thousand and seventeen. So it's important for you and there's just really no reason.
I want to be there, you know.
It's important that you should be there, Commissioner. I do. All three of you should be there.
October one, I think, is, it sounds like you, you have a few days to.
If we have some nice sandwiches, I might get away without having to take her up to eat.
Do you think you could have the time capsule ready by then?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, which is, we should take a minute. Um, it's a little out of order because we, um, if we're okay talking about the time capsule as part of.
As well.
We're in the middle of it. I, I, so, um, we need to put together the time capsule. Um, do we, how do we want to do it? We, you know, sort of missed that window from a getting school kids involved.
Well, it could be something from the beginning of school, starts the last week in August and I, you know, I will pick a grade level and ask, I don't know, multiple schools at, you know, fifth grade, sixth grade, I don't know.
What about the Brentwood?
Yeah. So.
See if they have a suggestion. We'll look at all the suggestions and.
You could put some notice in the newspaper, just say calling all, I mean, that seems like a good idea. I can, you know, there's enough, just saying calling all grades cake. I mean, let's just do a range.
Calling all kids.
Calling all kids. Yeah. I.
We can't do wrong because in a hundred years, it won't be here. It'll be all time. Even if it's wrong.
Well, we'll put a newspaper in and that will be long gone. They'll be looking at, those people actually read things on a piece of paper.
I think we could put an iPhone in with a charger.
Plus phone.
I don't think that is like, I mean, someone can plug that in in a hundred years and like, what is this relic? Like, you know, my kid doesn't know what a VHS is.
Right.
For a while.
Yeah, anyway.
Leila will have all the.
So do, do we want to contact the schools and, and ask them for their suggestions?
Let's work on a quick add in the newspaper and then we can also do outreach to, or let's put something, I'll work on this week on drafting something that we can put on our website.
And share with the teachers.
Share with teachers and share with.
Whatever newspapers want to carry it.
Correct. And then we'll, um, we'll try to, you know, because the first couple of weeks, we can give like a September fifteenth deadline. So that way we can drop, we'll have two weeks to acquire and that.
Can we make it?
What?
Can we make a contest for the kids, you know, like whose ever suggestions we use, we give them a gift certificate to Dunkin' Donuts or something or?
I think they should be, we could just invite them to the ribbon cutting ceremony.
Oh, that.
Part of the, the cutting. We'll give them the big scissors to be part of that process.
Sure.
Okay. So we got a plan. I'll get that drafted this week so we can be able to decide on either of them.
Yeah, that's.
Be a good time. All right. Um, I just, do you have anything?
Nothing I hasn't met with the industry superintendent for your new time today. He proved it. You're done. So they went back to HR, looking back to the three of us, they'll get signed. So I'm caught up. He wanted fires, but.
You're an HR nightmare.
Maybe a T-shirt is appropriate.
I surely I jest, Commissioner Tom Barello. You're always a good spirit about it. So I appreciate that. Um, I would just like to, I do want to say, uh, one, that's a building is remarkable. We went through and heard it and and it is, the team has just done a phenomenal job with the building and it's such, it's a building for the future. Like, I mean, it was really built. Too often you see building occur that it was, it's built for and, you know, built for the now and ten years from now it's antiquated or they, you run out of space and this has the needs of the county for the next fifty years, which is what we're trying, you know, what you try to work for, right? If you're gonna invest this much in a building, you want it to be for the future and you know, I, what a legacy Jude that you and your team are leaving for the citizens of Rockingham County. And, you know, it is worth mentioning, Commissioner Tom Barello, that you were start, you started at the inception of this project in two thousand and seventeen and now fast forward nearly ten years, you're back here seeing it to finality. So.
Jude and I talked about that.
Credit to you.
Yeah.
We talked about, you know, years ago, we thought about just putting a little place over by, and then we don't, it's that we house both the county attorneys and the registered deans. And the technology, I was amazed at technology, like there's curtains, when the fire alarm goes off, curtains come down in front of the elevator doors. So the elevators now they won't work, won't seat an elevator door. I mean, the technology, I mean, I mean, I'm amazed every day.
Burn the toast.
That the curtain will actually come out of the ceiling and go in front of the doors. So if somebody won't go, they push the button, wait for the door to open. Well, God forbid, there's a fire. I mean, technology is gonna surpass where, where we need to be over.
It's so great. It's, you know.
Water bubbles, I mean, you could.
It's very exciting. It is.
And I think just from a practicality standpoint, some of the features of the county attorney's office for when we have victims coming in to do, um, witness prep and things like that, the space, there's separate, like great spaces, there's uh, spaces for kids, just like there is so thoughtful and it's really going to make people coming in that might, in the circumstances that might not feel all that comfortable or feel anxious, more comfortable, more, you know, it's just, it's great. We're, I mean.
I do think it's a tribute to Warren Street. I mean, we met so many times with Pat. She was really clear about what the needs were and Warren Street Incorporated. Same thing with DOC, Sharps Department. You know, every department had room by room by room where you're in the furniture, the access. I mean, it was, Warren Street did a great job during design, holding everyone together. And I think Harvey's done a great job executing it. So
Yeah.
It has been a real joy.
I, it kind of blows my mind how you could like take, you know, like that, there's so much thought from a design standpoint of like bringing the building together as a whole and having like elements that repeated elements to unify it, but also so effectively meet the needs of each department and it's just kind of mind blowing, but I'm really impressed.
Newspaper article, when the three commissioners walked into an empty field, uh, yesterday pulling a little bit back up front of a building is just amazing. But we had the three pictures with, three of us just walking into a field.
The hay field, yeah.
By the chicks and all that stuff and how we look. I mean, it's amazing. People are gonna be so proud, you know, we'll, we'll all be able to talk about it, but the public, you know, you know, is really gonna think that we have a hell of a setup.
Well, it's great news. All right. Um, we're moving on to the finance office. Uh, we have a discussion first about the Amazon business account. Seems like a no-brainer. I don't see any reason not to. We use, we all order from Amazon across the county. I feel like it's no cost.
It saves us money.
Not in a, we're not locked into a contract period and it just can save us money.
Save us money.
It, it just has an aside. So this is because the National Association of Counties has an arrangement with, uh, with Amazon Business. And so then any county associations that are members, therefore they can avail themselves of this benefit, which is, you know, the, the highlight is free Amazon Business Prime accounts. And so that's even discounted pricing beyond what you see just going, having regular Amazon Prime accounts as well. So you get discounted pricing, the, there's no membership charges. And if the county's individual spend is high enough, we could see some cash rebates as well. What I will push for at the association side of things, the association is one that will get based on all, say, if all ten Neander counties participate in this, the association of counties will receive cash rebates and I'll push just like for U Source uh, participation that ninety percent of the, uh, cash rebates earned that are derived from individual counties go back to those counties. So it's not something that's foreign already to the Neander Association of Counties where we have a similar arrangement like that regarding U Source. Um, so I'd be pushing for that, that yes, to be a revenue source for the association, but let's be fair and turn around those cash rebates to the underlying counties that help generate those cash rebates.
Great. Thank you for advocacy with the Association of Counties.
On the treasures, I'll push for that too. Kathy's present, so, you know.
It's equitable. It's, it is equitable. It's equitable.
We're having arranged right now, again, U Source commissions that, that kind of processes are influenced. Great, so.
Okay. Any other discussion or? Okay, next we have the Whiply, so Whitley, Whitley, Medicaid and Medicare cost reports engagement letters.
We'll make a, a motion to approve the Whitley Medicaid and Medicare cost report engagement letters for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five and authorized to share. Sign all necessary documents recommended by the senior director of finance.
Second.
Discussion. Um, how does this compare for, from a cost standpoint relative to?
It's, it's not much of an increase from prior year. The only thing that I, um, that I do stress is that, uh, well, one, they do have a caveat where for, they would, if they incurred additional labor costs because we submit things late to them, but they still need to, you know, help us meet the nine thirty, in the case Medicaid cost report. Meet the nine thirty deadline, um, they would just say, we'll just charge you based upon additional hours that we need to do. Well, now they do have a caveat saying, well, you need to get us everything within forty-five days. So that's a bit more stringent. We will meet it, but it is a bit more stringent. If you don't do that, then they're gonna add on another twenty-five percent base and that is the biggest change in this engagement letter versus the prior. It also most likely means that this will indeed probably be the last year, at least on the Medicaid cost report side, that we go outside for preparation help. So what we'll probably do is, uh, Scraper County has always filed their own Medicaid cost reports. They have shared the Excel worksheets. We'll probably, I'm guessing, the springtime of next year, pay a visit to them because it's not a big busy time for them because they're calendar year. So their budget process will already be done. If we can take up some of their time and just kind of, again, I'm, I'm very familiar with many of the things I get, we classify to get moved around. But there's still, there's many different parts of the Medicaid cost report. So I know some questions asked of them on particular items, but it'd be good, not just for me, but Katie Casey and, and maybe one or two others in my office, maybe your Chantel wants to send Kathy Mas or someone else along too. It doesn't hurt for other, other people to be, you know, knowledgeable about Medicaid cost for preparation process.
Great.
So.
Um, and so do you think it's reasonable that we'll be in that, within that seventy-five hundred-ish cost?
Okay.
Yeah. Because that twenty-five percent, then now it's just over, then we'd have to.
We'll need forty-five days.
Um, uh, any further discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Tom Barello, Commissioner Godu, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Cigna Wellbeing Solutions Program Amendment.
The motion to all, all employees in their covered suspension to be eligible for wellness rewards regardless of the starting date on the plan with no exclusions. Further claims of wellness cash offered for employees in the Cigna Wellbeing Solutions effective August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five and authorized the senior director of human resources sign any necessary documents made to change or recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Discussion.
Julie, on this side. So we use this, I mean, we use it all up anyway. We want to do all of it. We left it here to the, that's that wellness money.
No, this is the wellness cash for like, if you get, if you run a five K, when you get a, uh, preemptive care, like, and so, it's a call. Yeah. So for, I mean, the, for the public or for consumption, um, you, our prior plan is if you, for instance, had a change in circumstance and came onto the plan mid-year, you were not eligible to engage in these wellness, this wellness cash back. So, um, this amendment would allow us to allow people who add on it, like for instance, there's a change in your spouse's circumstances or, and you end up coming onto the county plan mid-year or something like that. Then that spouse would also be eligible for those wellness orders. Instead of waiting to the, to the new plan year start. Additionally, the, there's, it is a change in terms of the administration. Um, the administration used to be sort of in-house and was direct dollars. Now it's gonna be managed by Cigna. And as part of that Cigna management, there's like, you can get your cards and things like that. Is that pretty much perfect?
You know, you might get a job.
Hi, in my weenies. Um, so that, I was trying to explain it. So for those from the public, anyone who, you know, likes to listen to our meetings after hours, um, you know what the.
Oh, I, I think one of the big changes was that all the spouses are automatically enrolled because Cigna doesn't have an accommodation to, uh, not unenroll. They, they, they just didn't work that way. So everybody's right in.
But still continue to earn the rewards, even though we would not have the employees getting the reward as we advantage for that.
Thank you. All right. On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barello, and I vote yes. Moving on to an acceptance request for the new appointment rate for in the county attorney's office.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve and accept the request personnel policy seven days free. New appointment rate for the county attorney's office employee head mom as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Discussion.
Is this for the deputy?
No, this is for.
We have replaced.
Area lead.
What is it?
Area lead. There's the four areas leads and so she.
Okay. Because I know we just heard that, that deputy was leaving. I didn't know if we had made a decision on having a new.
Okay, cause I know we just heard that, that deputy was leaving, I didn't know if we had made a decision on having a new one in yet.
I think likely what's happening, and this is where the overlap happens, likely, one of the area leads, existing. Area leads will, will apply to become the deputy, and so. Yeah, and this was, this is part of the, I guess, succession planning, if you will, to move. Is that fair, Pat? Or is there anything else?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, also, I, I did, um. Conducted interviews over the last couple of weeks and done some serious thought and consideration about who's gonna be the deputy, and I did make a decision. Um, our next deputy county attorney will be Attorney John Mara. He's been with our office for ten years now. He's been a lead for a number of years as well, so I'm excited about that. Um, he won't officially take the position for, I think, a week or two until, you know, Kristen's last day. Or official last day, um, but he will be the new deputy.
Excellent. Well, congratulations to Attorney Mara. Um, as you, uh, Pat, I mean, if ever you want a recruiting tool. Uh, for hiring, uh, take all, like, perspective for applicants, have them walk through the building. In the next two months, it is like, talk about, uh, uh, a recruiting tool.
So is the furniture in the building yet? I'm just curious.
The furniture is in, but there's enough to envision the, the future.
They're allowed to move, they're allowed to move furniture in now, they have the permit. Uh, that, or the temporary occupancy permit, so that I think that we'll see some furniture starting to move in fairly shortly.
They're moving furniture and not yet. Pat especially concerned about her cuticles, and they have not yet been installed. I will take you a picture the day they come in, Pat, I promise.
Thank you, Jude, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Um, the other, so that's really good to know, uh, Commissioner Coyle, there's, there's actually two folks that, that I interviewed recently. That have some great experience that I'm hoping I can convince to come to our office, so if, if things get, um. You know, a little hairy with the, with the back and forth and the negotiation, maybe I'll approach you to see if I can meet one or both of them at the new building.
Ah, that would be.
Yeah, I'll let you know, but thank you.
You know what to do first, though, Pat, bring him to your old place first.
They've already banged here for the interview, so they've seen this.
Yeah.
That's right.
See that, and film before and after.
I think it's like, even things like having your own office, it's gonna, I mean.
Just start right there.
Start there.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Um, on the motion, Commissioner Tomarelo, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Sure. Next we have an exception request for overtime for the Department of Corrections.
I make a motion to approve an exception person law policy seven dash eleven. Overtime for Department of Corrections employees C M, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Pretty straightforward. Um, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomarelo, and I vote yes. Next we have a repurposed downgrade position in long-term care services.
I'll make a motion to approve a repurpose in a downgrade. Of one full-time licensed care partner position to. One full-time personnel care partner position effective August ten, two thousand twenty-five, as recommended by the. Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Discussion.
The only thing, are, are we eliminating that?
No, we're not eliminating it. At the essence of living, there's two different, um, pieces that you can do from a licensure standpoint. You don't have to be unlicensed, if you're licensed to an L and A, it can be easy.
Easy to fill.
We have, um, a lot of candidates right now, actually, invested in the P C P, and we don't have, one we would like to offer on, but we don't have a position to be able to offer. Because it's in the equivalent of the L and A essentially, so this would allow us to move that position. And be able to offer on some of the candidates, because we have a few that they're in the process of interviewing for.
And by leaving it open, we don't have to go to delegation.
It's, well, it's a downgrade.
Cause we're going down, so we're saving money.
If we eliminate it, though, try to get that position back, we'd have to go back to that.
I, I don't want to eliminate it, though, I need it. I just want, there isn't a candidate in that one.
That makes sense.
So in order for me to fill it, I just have to.
Filling the current need.
Yeah.
On the motion, Commissioner Tomarelo, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next we have a bid waiver, um, we're moving on to long-term care services, we have a bid waiver request for the mobility works.
I'll make a motion to approve the mobility work proposal, bid waiver request, the amount of, um, sixty-five thousand. You know, sometimes you have a good hearing, Dave. They am hearing really good with my eyes, unfortunately, I guess. I thought that was a six, it would have been nice, we would have saved twenty grand, but unfortunately, the motion's gonna be the amount of eighty-five thousand. Four hundred and seventy for the purchase of wheelchair van to replace car nine, and recommend, recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Discussion.
One question, really don't want car nine.
There, it, the work that it requires to, it's, it's not cost that back to them.
This is a big jump up from car nine to. An eighty-five thousand dollar wheelchair van, this is significant change.
So one of the big pieces for it is we do a lot of transportation of residents in wheelchairs for the nursing home as well. When we're transporting someone in a wheelchair for the nursing home, because they can't utilize car nine, we're actually using our larger passenger van. To transport, which is bigger than it needs to be, from a gas, kind of those components of it. So when car nine came due of needing to be replaced, we wanted to utilize something that would meet the needs without. Continuing to cause all the extra need for the bigger, um, bigger van to be utilized, because it's a ten. Bus, yeah, so we're using the bus to transport when we don't. Uh, the other piece where it is slightly higher than a couple of other options is around the all-wheel drive feature, because when we're bringing our. Residents out in the winter into appointments, we.
Yeah, no, that's necessary. Minivans are notoriously bad in the snow. So all-wheel drive for that, for safety, worth the extra.
Yeah, and the problem is, like, we don't have a lot of, um, wheelchair accessible. Transportation.
Right.
So I think the need is there, for sure. My question is more, like, obviously we're doing a bid waiver, because it seemed like initially there wasn't a.
So there were no bids, um, at the time, and so we did some of our own research. This company had the car, which is the one that we originally were in contact, um, with, you've seen, the reason they didn't bid at that time is because there wasn't one on the law. So because they're not as quick to get with all of the adoptions, they tend to sell rather quickly. So by the time the bid waiver comes out, they won't bid, because there's no guarantee, it's on the law.
Jimmy went through the specs thoroughly, with.
Okay.
And told staff to make sure that it was gonna meet their needs.
And just like, you know, I, I know we don't do, so it's a bid waiver, obviously there's not formal bidding. But did we, I mean, I assume it was properly, like, we do the soft, soft bidding, you know, like, you were reaching, the outreach, the. Just to make sure we're not getting.
This is the only one we were able to find, that's even in stock right now, or has any identification of one.
And truly, if you put the RFP back out again, it will be gone by the time we publish the RFP. You'd be back with your.
But it's at eighty-five thousand, is that sort of what the going rate is for this, these types of vans?
It's slightly, in, it's slightly more than some other wheelchair vans, but this is the only model that has the all-wheel drive.
Yeah.
So that was kind of the piece. Jimmy truly, I mean, I thought like we had, that we went through. And then from there, we narrowed it down and had more conversation, so it is slightly more than a different van would be, but it's the only one that has the all-wheel drive performance. And because it's New England, we thought it would be important.
To Commissioner Godu's point, that's.
I think that's necessary.
Yeah, and we probably, I mean, what, do we have any other? Um, van or trans handicap accessible vehicle that is.
We're using the, we use the bus, and then depending on the weather, we're sometimes having to. Try and reschedule an appointment, because it's not safe to go out, or kind of driving. Additionally, where the lift is to get in causes different components of parking at times. Uh, and depending on the appointment, it takes six months to get in with an neurologist sometimes, so for having to cancel it, the ramifications can sometimes.
This has a lift off the back.
Oh, that's.
So you can pull into a space and you can always use the lift. They really thought it out.
Yeah, it sounds like Jimmy also did a lot of work on it. Right.
Just quick, when they removed, so the price was eighty-eight thousand, they give us three thousand back, but. We're removing that stuff. They don't lower the price, but it's removing those items that are saying removes.
No.
Is it, there's a couple of things that have been removed, looks like the back, I mean, removed, but I mean, those spent, it should be out, right?
What was the question?
So on one of the pages, it shows a couple of items being removed from the van, I saw the eighty-eight, the three thousand dollar rebate, or whatever the. Three thousand, but there's a couple of things being removed from the back of the van.
Looks like a chair.
It's a, it's the feet, so that's where the wheelchair bolts dropped down into.
We should get them, because if we haven't sold them, we might sell it with that back in there, and we pay for it.
I can inquire.
I don't want it, I don't need a backseat, but I mean, if we're paying for it, we should get it.
I think they take the seats out, though, to mount the wheelchair locks. So you can put the wheelchair in place and they have to be locked in.
Yeah, but I think.
I think they modify the body, maybe.
So Tomarelo is saying, I think what he's saying is.
Save the chairs.
Save it, yeah.
I mean, like, the sheriff takes the cars, the back seats out, we can send the car to auction and take the plastic things out. Temporary seats for the prisons or whatever, but, yeah, I think we should just get it. What else for the bond?
Uh, then, from a, uh, let's see. We have, um, some, is it forty-six thousand that got encumbered?
Two-one-three got encumbered, and then we have the additional twenty-three this year, and we're gonna do the three, because originally what was budgeted. And then the cost of what it ended up coming in, um, there was a variance, so in conversations, it's shock rather than doing it in bigger encumbered than.
Okay, so we put forty-six down and then financed the rest of capital, losing. Where's the rest of the money going?
Well, cap lease is due over three years, so we'd have installment one, and then two and three over the next two budget cycles.
Okay, is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Alright, just confirming the. Um, alright, any other discussion?
Nope.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomarelo.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next we have a bid waiver request for Clean O-Rama.
We make a motion to approve the cornerstone V and A. Motion to approve Clean O-Rama proposal, and bid waiver request the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars for the purchase of the. Topcat, drivers, things that, floors scrub up, and accessories, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Discussion. Essentially sole source.
Yeah, it's no choice, we need the floors, uh, clean.
Sure.
Um, so, so we had money, but we're just moving the other, the additional one, right, the access fee. To the hundred ninety bucks, so we earned a lot of money.
No, the, that's for the thirty-eight hundred, but thirty-nine hundred is the battery, and then the twelve thousand is the machine. So it's just the, the total that adds up to that sixteen. Okay. On the motion, Commissioner, uh, Tomarelo.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next we have Cornerstone V and A hospice agreement.
Motion to approve the Cornerstone V and A hospice agreements for. A one-year term with automatic renewals, um, for success, for successive. One-year terms and authorized the chair signing on necessary documents, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care.
Second.
Discussion.
Now, this is famous before.
Um, they have a stronger presence in this area, and they actually approached us because they have a lot of individuals on caseload. That would like to come to us, but stay on their care, and unfortunately, because it hasn't worked out, so I hope we can be able to work through that partnership with this.
Great.
And be able, um, to support all of our residents in Washington. That's why I like to be here.
What have been the barriers prior to?
It was before my time, so I don't feel comfortable sleeping.
Okay, that's fine. Um, it looks like, uh, prime X review, there was one issue with regard to. Um, uh. Liability insurance was one of those least marked up climate contracts I've ever seen.
It's nothing on it almost.
Yeah, so, and, um, we're comfortable with the rates. Right, any further discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomarelo, and I vote yes. Next we have the IntelliCare Agreement Addendum.
Make a motion to approve the IntelliCare Agreement Addendum. Addendum, allowing assisted living facilities to be included in per dealing staffing services. And authorized the chair signing on necessary documents, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Discussion.
If I may, yeah, so, um, it's a per diem agency, so when you don't have enough shifts for a whole contract, vacations, something unexpected, we can get. One shift covered, things of that nature. The companies that we have used historically, they don't have as many per diem pools as this is living. And they're not on this contract, um, so it's, it's to get access to be able to do that if needed.
Great. Per diem is nice, like, we don't need, we won't use it if we don't need it, but if we do, it's there, but.
Right.
Good insurance.
Bill.
Yeah. Um, okay, uh. On the motion, Commissioner Tomarelo.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now we have Ugeria Care Incorporated, uh, Tover Taffel subscription reduces, did I say that right? Wow.
I believe that's how I say it, I can't.
Never sees.
Downfall, you know, lifetime, so fifty and additional, you get a warranty for a total of sixty-six hundred and fifty dollars. And authorized, yes, and on necessary documents, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Discussion.
If I could explain what it is, just for some context, so it's.
Can you, can you pronounce it?
Tover Taffel.
Yeah.
Tover Taffel, okay.
So it's on our memory care unit, above one of the tables, it's a projector that has games that our residents can engage in, there are different quizzes, puzzles. It's dementia friendly, they can't eat it, infection control is not a concern, you just wipe the table after. Uh, when the unit was purchased, we had a subscription that is coming to an end, so in order for us to use the capacity of the device. To continue to do it is the renewal, um, and it is.
But the, that, um, you know, the table has been, it's so fantastic, it's just such a great tool for the resident.
It really is.
For engagement, so it seems like short money for a lot of, uh, return on investment, anyway. On the motion, anyone, anybody else? Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomarelo, and I vote yes.
Okay.
Alright, right to department head updates. Julie, lead us.
Oh. Um, well, not too much to talk about today, although I do have an exciting, um, it's not exciting. So we had our second visit from the ice cream emergency people, which, as always, was well received, and we had a couple of dogs visit this time. They were very happy about it, I heard. Um, all the pictures that we got back from the event, everybody was smiling, it was great, so, um. I wish we could have them come once a month, that'd be awesome. I don't know about that. Uh, also, just wanted to let everybody know, the years of service invitations were ordered, they're gonna be going out to people in the next. Four weeks, R S B Ps are going to be due back on September twenty-sixth. Seems like a long way away, but it's gonna be here before you know it, so that's just my public service announcement, and I think that's all enough.
Thank you, Julie.
Meatball, having a little ice cream.
Yeah.
Yes, they did. They were very thrilled, because they had a, they actually had ice cream cups for the, for a dog, and they were very happy to have me there.
But the name like Meatball. Have to reduce this.
Jason, take it away.
Uh, see about Meatball, uh, he actually attended his first, uh, STAR, which is our in-house nine-day program. Um, they started to go to, uh, being involved with the programs with the inmates, so that was his first one, uh, yesterday. So, we're very happy with that, the, he's in visiting units, the inmates are ecstatic and, uh, about, so. We both doing great. Alright, my staff comes in, I guess, every day, and then put on the office real quick, a quick second, petting the dog, goes to units, makes them happy to start with, and petting the way out. Fantastic. Tony Sherman put snacks in all of our offices upstairs, so, you know, the dog show stuff.
Can you bring Meatball back over to the commission?
Anytime.
Eating sometime.
Anytime, we'll bring a snack jar, too.
Want to see Meatball before the committee's meeting.
We can do that. Uh, thank you for flooring, uh, we've done the, uh, uh, staff dining, the locker room. We can do that. Uh, thank you for flooring. Uh, we've done the uh, uh, staff dining, the locker room and. Some little area over there. Um, it's, it's fantastic. Looks nice. Um. It was some coordination. We had moved the staff food out of there to give another space and that kind of stuff, but. And easy working back and forth with our department and it's.
Yeah, flexible. You guys are wonderful.
It's great. We've done a lot painting too, all the avenue area and I haven't always been able to take a. A crew and get it all done. Why um, Evans can do his outside stuff, so. We've been blazing right along the old attorney visits with that hue color that I hate is this day one.
It is a terrible.
Is now all, it's all, we have everything's gone gray and white. And so even in there, it looks.
Fresh.
Yeah, everything looks really good. So we're doing a lot of work, including painting the units that are empty and stuff, so.
Calmer.
Yeah.
Better for client relations.
Uh, beginning of the week, we started at one sixty-five and then now at one fifty-one.
Whoa.
Um, you got Hampton Beach picking up, you got, and interesting, in general, it's that time of year and start picking up. Uh, Monday is our next academy. We have two candidates going there. I will be down Monday morning to open the academy and set expectations. And I think right now, a lot of um, I will, I will invite you. We, we had told you before about the, a lot of supervisors, um, that two supervisors are gonna be two people in our. Um, classification, uh, which would be uh also. Yalwela and then Officer Kyra will uh now corporals be inside there. Corporal Lamprell is going to first shift. Corporal Hanson, the on second shift, Corporal Officer Lattalian. Um, and obviously happy, another female which is great, having a supervisor for us. Um, two sergeants that were corporals moved on first shift Davies. Um, and Blake on third and then um Corporal Olivera. Um, from Brazil, uh, his wife is the one, ex-wife, she, they came here and spoke um from Brazil as his ex-wife. Um, he is now a sergeant on the third shift, which is great. His, two of them are success stories coming out of Brazil to, to America. Oh, which is fantastic. So we're gonna do a, and Danielle was our case manager, moving into the late act position. But we're gonna do a one-day motion ceremony with that many moves. Then when it's out, I will invite all of you if you'd like to move. We do pending and swearing ins.
That's great.
Then very positive and stuff. So it's been fantastic.
Excellent.
So I have, thank you.
Just a quick question. I mean, once, when I hear one sixty-five, that's the highest it's been at the jail in. Like, I have to say, like, five or six years. Um, how is it going with staffing? And that, I'm, you know, managing a.
So we have some, yeah, well, we, we obviously asked a long time. I opened up another unit. Um. We only open up for females though, because the problem, the issue right now is I have eight and ten females that are on methadone right this second. Um, I'll happen to win, also announced that, working with the state. They just kind of agreed to uh an MOU with Carroll County that we could do take homes. Methadone to there. It's not finalized, but the, the, they gave us the draft and they were. They only had a couple, our draft to them, they only had a couple of tweaks, so that's going forward, which will allow them to go up there, which again will go back to closing that, that area again. Um, staffing, we had two starting last week. We have uh another one starting Monday. We have two or three or five one to the polygraph. Uh, um, Dave Costino or our major is the one who usually does the letters and calls to these people and for interviews. Did not realize that the, indeed, quick indeed had changed. So we got nothing, we didn't know why, contacted Autumn because he was to click down the old account. Again, a new count, there were thirty-five applications sitting there waiting. So, so they used to say. We're getting some in very quickly to do some interviews.
I guess that weeds out the people who are not too interested.
And with that last thing we said, we implemented a psychological test. Um, we actually got it from Millsboro County, is doing it. It's twenty-five dollars a person. They fill it out, they get sent to um, that person who actually has an algorithm, scores all, everything else. And it's fantastic. Been able to weed some people out. Um, we've also been final offense there, like, oh, this will work. And also, though, we, this is some areas we want to work with, including doing it with new supervisors that are testing. To see where the areas we might be working, maybe if you're too into an introvert, you gotta work on you being an expert. If you're lacking in this area, it's, it's amazing tool. I'm gonna give it to um Allison because you can use it for multiple different departments. It's very, twenty-five bucks is so inexpensive for the material that you get out of it. That's it.
Thank you. Chantel.
Hi, I'm not in the sixties and one sixties. Our census is one thirty-four in the nursing home. Forty-seven in the assisted living. We have no outbreak or cases to report, so I will take that as a win. Um. Continuing through different pieces, we did the training with the teams that are this week for our policy platform. So we have started to start working through some of those. We completed the PBJ audit, truthfully financed it all legwork. But it went well. Um, working still through the dietary transition and some opportunities that we are still addressing as they come up. Uh, we are about one year at the mark for our survey from last year, so we are anticipating them any day now. Assuming they're sticking, they seem to be right within a couple of weeks of it, so we're anticipating them. Uh, still working through the last pieces, but our D two going down to B one pending the last. On B one for us to be able to move down to allow the work for facilities on B two. Um, I just got an email in here with the list of the six individuals in orientation next week for us and I'm happy to report two of them are RNs.
Whoa.
Talk about win. So figured I'd share that.
That's been.
Yeah.
Un.
That is like Delarah on the floor. Uh, yeah, no, so really excited about that. Um, the two pieces, just as a general, I will be spending out. To within, hopefully this week, is uh from our newsletter, the kind of updates to the cap for some of the items. So I will send that out. Um, we have the trading on September seventeenth for the gentleman coming that will be open for families. Um, our staff, there's dementia trading, this mental um illness, and then there's a leadership. So if anyone in the county wants to send in their staff, they are welcome to. It will be in the Hilton and there'll be a sign up. At the board and the last piece, um, working with HR, Autumn and I have had meetings about doing a job fair. So that will be coming soon. So Autumn will be reaching out to see who wants to participate. Uh, so hopefully right as schools started and settled and people are looking, we can.
I, I think it's just remarkable that we're seeing, I mean, it's kind of seems so unusually for July, August to see. Applications coming in, um, because. So to see this many applications coming at this time of year, I think bodes extraordinarily well to the fall. When people actually start looking for jobs.
There's a lot of changes in healthcare with hospitals being acquired that are going for private to the public that has caused some tensions and. A lot going on with some of our, our healthcare partners that I think has helped to create this for my side, not so much Jason. Continuing to capitalize. Not anything for me.
Thanks, Chantel.
Chantel, uh, I had lunch out near Adrian now, there's a family there. So me, me and Tommy, the shy guy, we were in, parked there for a while and sat down with them. So she was in assisted living. The lady was, an older woman was in assisted living. She had an ankle injury, so now she's kind of in. So she was in assisted living, single room. We don't have single rooms, because it kind of broke my heart that she loves the place when she's leaving.
And is leaving?
No.
She will go from assisted living now if you're not capable to do.
Would love to have the conversation with you, but I'm also not comfortable talking about someone's medical information that's going online. Um.
In the meantime, she's moved in my house, but that's real.
A lot of snow and cheney.
Yeah, you can tell me after, I just.
Yeah, because it's the only way I could answer that. I don't feel comfortable reading that in regards to the residents from there personally.
Yeah, I just want from my own.
So are you asking if we have privates on the nursing home side?
Yeah, private room.
We have a handful of them. We have some, our skill is all privates. Um, Medicaid doesn't cover privates though. And from a percentage, or probably ninety percent, some privates where there's roommates compared to um. A private room.
The assistant's all private, right?
No, no.
Not, the living not private.
Well, some of them, they had like, they shared one bathroom.
There's like four different floor plans, if I'm not mistaken. There's like a small studio, there's a bigger one bedroom, there's a. Link with a shared living space and then there's just a room similar to the nursing home that has to. And depending on the room is different price points and kind of all those components build in.
Okay.
Um, we're going right to Zirland. I'm throwing the curve off. Um, Pat. How are you?
I'm good. How are you? Um, so, these are really busy, obviously. Um. Deputy County Attorney Kristen Bartonian is leaving to pursue some, um. A profession or, you know, lawyering at a law firm in Manchester. So um, she was excited about it. I'm excited for her. It's something different. She's been a prosecutor for about fifteen years now, so I think it was just time for her to move on. Um, I'm excited that John Mayer is gonna move into that position. As I mentioned, he's been here for ten years. I hired him right out of law school and um, you know, he started as an assistant, worked his way up to a lead and now he'll. He'll be promoted to deputy. Um, so I'm really happy for him and excited to work with him in that role and, you know, you guys will, will a lot love him. He's a great lawyer and he's a good person. Um. We also, as I mentioned, have interviewed some really qualified candidates. One is a circuit court prosecutor up in the Plymouth area. And has been doing so for around ten years. Um, made some phone calls up there and she's got a really good reputation. Um, we also interviewed someone who's currently employed at the Carroll County Attorney's Office. Who has been prosecuting and trying serious cases like AFSA's and things like that, so. Um, going to be making them a, an offer soon uh after consulting with, with HR and a, a couple of different things. Um, we're still short one legal assistant. We're, we're in the midst of doing interviews for, for that. And uh hopefully we will find someone soon. Um, but things are good, busy as usual, but things are going well.
Great, thanks, Pat. Um, Kathy.
Good afternoon. Um, nothing, same old, same old here at the op. But I do want to say thank you very much for the. Ice cream that was uh, you know, delivered over here. Staff loved it. It was really great. It, as I said in my email, it really uh helps with morale. And shows that you guys really appreciate what's going on, so thank you very much.
Imagine how excited Kathy will be when I come over.
Well, I will tell you, they were very excited that Commissioner Godu came over today, so it's always a plus.
They even recognized me. That is the idea.
Thank you, Kathy.
Um, so we have the auditors from Vashon Kukai Company on site this week. And so that's kind of, you know, uh, that's really great. It's also different because. We've been used to this prior firm wanting to do as much as possible remotely, so it's actually interesting having the auditors on site. Uh, so I think they've been making uh some good progress. Obviously, they have a whole different. Um, audit planning methodology, so we are addressing some things or answering things that, you know, maybe previously. Uh, you know, analytical type things that, you know, were not requested before, but that's no problem at all. Um, and so far, again, the, the firm's been great to work with. Um, we're also working on those twenty-twenty-five Medicaid cost for items. Since we have a short window, making sure we get all of those things uh submitted, um, so quickly. And I thank you for approving those engagement letters. Um. For the last three days, went through um the four interviews with four individuals for the last round of interviews. For the accounting analyst position and uh, and I've got the individual that I want to recommend going forward with. So uh, I communicated that with Autumn yesterday, so hopefully soon that position can be uh filled as well. That'd be great. Um, and I know this will be covered more into new business, but uh the other day. I got a message from Rubris, which is the uh National, well, National Old Glory Settlement. Um, administrators authorized by the feds. And uh, so the Purdue settlement is ready. So I'm talking with uh Jason Henry here, that that amounts over thirty million to the state. And then if obviously the state wants all the twenty-three municipalities and counties that. Have individually sued to also update on this, but uh thirty mil.
Not just that though, so are this so. So they want all the ones that, that participated in this and some of the larger towns and municipalities to sign off that they're not committed forward, blah, blah, blah. There's a sentence they want out of a bunch of different places, so it's. It's not just those twenty-three sub recipients, but they want others as well. So it's being put out, but to sign off on.
But if we get our relatively normal percentage amount, that would should mean eight hundred thousand dollars or it's arrived.
Is that likely to not be the case though? Because like, if I'm a municipality, I'm like, or you know, a city or town. I'm not waiving any rights if I'm not getting a.
Gordon, uh, Assistant Attorney General Fanning doesn't think this will be, with the sub recipients signing off and although he got a couple, he doesn't see the invasion.
In my estimate, the eight hundred thousand is on the low.
Right, you always, you always under promising over her form check.
But unfortunately, since um, again, I didn't, it wasn't proper for me to be the ones to sign off on that for the county. So, but once I, for the assignment on um, to the chair, to the US chair. Uh, I was able to see exactly what the deadline was, but it seemed like already a day afterwards, I was getting another reminder email about it.
I don't have.
Must be pretty immediate.
It didn't come to me, so we have to discuss that after. I, I keep checking my email. I've not received it.
It's on the jump.
I'll check my junk.
Okay.
We can talk offline now.
Okay. But uh, so that's something, um, I was, I was a little surprised it kind of arrived as soon as it did. Because last update from Cherry Beppe was it was still. Yeah. The person was rejected and, right, they went back and. But uh, again, still settling back in after being on vacations for a couple of weeks, so uh, just busy as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Robin?
Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
A few things. Uh, first of all, thank you for attending our cybersecurity training that we had a few weeks ago. I think that. Uh, gentleman that spoke did a great job in kind of including the entire crowd. Uh, we were able to record it, so we can have, we'll have that on thumb drag. To be able to pass on to the departments if they have some new people or some people that weren't able to attend. So thank you for that. Um, I've been working on things for the new building, obviously. Had a meeting with First Light yesterday. They're gonna be coming out on Monday and connecting us. Uh, while having that meeting with them, I did speak to them about telephone charges. Uh, Chantel and I had a conversation last week, um, and about the concern for, you know, the residents' responsibility for some of these phone bills. Uh, we've sensed as of yesterday, they may go back to the first, but they've uh removed all the long distance telephone charges for us, so.
Wow.
So they're not gonna go back, you know, they'll probably just go back to the beginning of the billing period uh going forward. So we won't have to worry about that anymore and it won't be a hardship for our residents.
My gosh, thank you, Robin.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
We've worked with them to negotiate um some costs and some information to also have them over in the new building as our backup. Um, so that we will have an immediate failover. Our equipment begins to arrive. Uh, we just took a big shipment of about thirteen cases a few minutes ago. Uh, that we're gonna go through and see. So we're really starting to move forward with getting things in place uh over in the building. So hopefully when people start to move in, their, their stuff will be there and they'll be happy campers. Um, we also have some system uh changes. That's gonna be effective. I sent a notice out uh from five to seven AM on next Wednesday, so. You know, First Light was agreeable to come in as early as I could possibly get them here. The guys, you know, agreed to do the work for us. So we're basically moving where our equipment is that comes in off of the street for First Lights. We're gonna move it out of the cellar and we're gonna put it behind a secure door, so that's a, a much needed thing. But the impact should be minimal. It's early in the day, you know, people in the office and things like that with some failovers, so we're ready.
Um, well, thank you, Robin. I do want to say that um, as we went through that cybersecurity training, which was excellent on my. As the, the bubble in my head is we're doing these things, like Robin already has that security. It's Robin already has that security. Like, it was a series of checking the boxes, like, talk about preemptive strike, you're um, you're. So what it, the takeaway I had is how far ahead of the curve you are in terms of some of these security measures.
Thank you.
So, no, thank you. Because things go sideways. It's like the counties and the newspapers and. Yeah, there are people harmed.
Yeah, there are people harmed, so.
Jude, pick it away.
Thank you, good afternoon, I have a, a few auditions today as well. Um, as far as the new building goes, the elevators were inspected today by the state of the Hampshire, we had, um. Harvey had paid an operator from Stanley to run it for the last two or three days, so that they could start getting the early. Furniture deliveries, uh, onto the floors, I don't think there was anything up on deeds, but we did see a few pieces on kind of insurance floor in the offices yesterday. So, we're good to go on the elevators now, they passed the inspection, um, a couple of weeks ago. We had a lower door inspection on the building, and what they do is they test the building for air tightness. With fans and sealing all the doors and et cetera, the standard is zero point four, I know it's kind of detailed, but it's, for me, it's really exciting stuff. The standard is zero point four, Cascal's, the building passed at zero point two four, it almost qualifies for lead platinum. It's a high performance building as far as air tightness goes, and it'll be huge for us going forward for energy efficiency. So, it's just, you know, one more tribute to Harvey and the, the good job they and all of their subs have done, was really happy to hear that, zero point two four is impressive.
It's happening, done for in a residential setting, you have lower door test, I mean, that is.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
Lead platinum almost.
And that's crazy, because we weren't, you know, there to get those, hit those lead standards were very costly.
Right.
And we're, you know, really at the, at the line of those need standards, the premium standards without. You know, just by regular.
We've asked them to make, you know, high efficiency decisions throughout. It's paying off, and going forward, the building will be that much more efficient to, to run.
The heating cooling costs go way down.
Yeah, so we're excited about that.
Really cool.
Um, the, while we're having the air conditioning units replaced on the launch of Care Building. We've also had the lightning recertified, it's been a long time since the lightning protection was certified on this building. Primex is gonna be really happy about it, we've tried over the years to find someone to take care of it for us. And, um, we finally found somebody through our vendor, who is certifying the nursing home building for us, I'm very excited about that, the next one will be working, or will be the jail. Um, the new building is being done by virtue of the construction project, but this building has been a long time needing to be done. You know, contractors come in twenty years ago to replace rooftop units, and they've got this braided copper cable in their way, they cut it. So, the, the lightning protection was not intact on the building and we're being recertified now. So, it's, it's good news for the safety of the building and I'm sure the insurance company will be very happy about it. Um, what else? The dam fees, the fees that we pay for the dam, you might recall the states like changed some standards. The dam fees that we're gonna be paying are doubling, so where we were paying fifteen hundred dollars for a dam fee for the lagoon at the wastewater. Now we're paying three thousand. Stuff like that, we're seeing the fees increase, and I, I did want to let you know that with regard to vehicle inspections, although. It, it will not be mandatory going forward, our intent is to continue to maintain the same level of standard. You know, will, every vehicle will be inspected to the standard that we've always maintained, one of the ways this. Someone might be making money by not having the inspections, is they're gonna be having vehicles towed that are found in violation, and then the state will. So, we're gonna make sure that all of our vehicles are absolutely as safe as possible, and we're gonna continue to live up to the existing standards.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I'm sure you have a plan in place to. Like, record keeping of our.
Everything.
Sure, just because it's like, now we don't have actual inspection stickers verified that.
They have everything, yeah, so.
They'll give us something safe.
The state doesn't want us to do it anymore, we're gonna do it on our own to make sure that we're safe.
Wouldn't they sign off to like, they're not your part, improve them, when you and I talked today about them, how we pay them. Will they give us something besides just parking?
Oh, with the state fire marshal in the building?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we've been getting ongoing certificates as we go, we're unconditional right now, there's a couple of electrical items, like the dispatch furniture. That's gonna be connected up through the floor, the, um, hats, cubicles, the wire is coming up through the floor and those, and they want us. Physically see those connections before they give us the final, everything else on the electrical permit passed. So, yeah, we're making good progress.
Excellent.
That's all I have, thank you very much, I was really grateful that everyone came yesterday, it was very, very helpful, thank you.
Thank you, seriously, it's crazy, it's just, thank you for all your work. And hopefully you can have it.
All of us.
Yeah, no, it is, it takes a village, but.
Yeah.
You might deserve a nap. How are you?
Good thanks, how are you? I have nothing.
Okay. Great. Um, all right, that concludes Department head updates, let's move on to new business, old business, we've, uh, you know. Um, Chuck gave us our spoiler alert, but let's move on to the Purdue direct settlement approval.
Make a motion to approve the county's participation in the Purdue direct settlement and authorize the chair to send on the survey documents. That are recommended by the senior director of finance.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Mr. Camaro, and I vote yes. Any other new business or old business? Be, no, okay, uh, public comment? No one from the public today. Um, so we will move right into non-public session, I think first. We have, uh, human resources, Department of Corrections and Long Term Services, so, um. Why don't we start with Department of Corrections, because I think that. Is that okay with everybody? It won't be, I think that one won't be terribly wrong. What? Do you have, are you quick?
Wait, make the, yeah, starts with you.
I'll make the motion.
Why don't we move to enter to non-public?
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, sure, yes. Discussion. Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Camarillo. Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Good afternoon, we have come back into public session after being a non-public session. We had eight non-public sessions, and so I'm going to make some motions with respect to the non-public session. I move to seal, um, items one, two, three. Uh, four, five. And seven indefinitely, because it could render a proposed action ineffective, and we don't have an end date to. Uh, those items. With respect to items number six and eight. Um, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely, because it could, um, adversely affect the reputation of any, a member. A person other than a member of this board. And that's on, an ongoing, uh, reputational issue.
Second.
Um, any discussion with respect to the non-public? Motion?
No.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Camaro, and I vote yes. And that concludes our business for the day, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned, have a nice, uh, rest of the week, everyone.